Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining the Surrey Board of Trade tonight. And we are here in Surrey, British Columbia, and we are in election season. Surrey is going to be the largest city in British Columbia. And tonight you are here to listen to the school trustee election candidates. And I'm Anita Hubbardman, I'm president and CEO of the Surrey Board of Trade. And I'm an honorary captain of the Royal Canadian Navy appointed by Canada's Defence Minister. I'd like to acknowledge that we are on the unceded and traditional territory of our coastalish peoples, specifically the Quatlin, Kate C, Semiam, Utuas, and Keika, Kukuitlam. And I also acknowledge that we're on the land of the Inuit and Métis peoples. And we honor their lands on which we are on. And all of our coastalish peoples, our Inuit and Métis peoples, have a profound effect on the land and water surrounding our great city of Surrey. Thank you so much for being with us this evening. So I want to make sure that you are here to listen to all of the election candidates. The Surrey Board of Trade is Surrey City Building Business Organization. And our youth, our future workforce are very integral parts of our economic future in our city, in our region, in our province, and in our nation. And that is why it's so important to us in our partnership with the Surrey School District, the Surrey School Board, to make sure that we are working together on partnerships and projects related to youth projects, whether it's for career pathways or entrepreneurial pathways. So check out businessinsurie.com for more information on what Surrey City Building Business Organization, the Surrey Board of Trade does. Events like this simply would not happen without corporate support. A round of applause, everyone, for our series presenting sponsor, IOM Property Group. Our supporting sponsor is the Fraser Valley Real Estate Board. And thank you so much, the Surrey Now Leader, as our media sponsor. And I'd also like to acknowledge our sign interpreters tonight. Thank you so much for being here with us. So this event is not only hosted by the Surrey Board of Trade, it's co-hosted with the South Asian Business Association. And we've had a long time enjoyable partnership focusing on economic projects together. And they're a volunteer-based organization based right here in Surrey. And they do amazing work to ensure that we're enhancing the livability of our city. So thank you so much to the South Asian Business Association, also known as SABBA. So I can't stress enough, everyone, and this is a call to action to each of you in the audience, to tell everyone to vote in this election. And it's not only about city councillors, it's not only about your mayoral candidates, but your school trustees are an important part of Surrey's economic present and future. And that is why everyone needs to understand who they are, what their skill sets are, and what they're going to bring to the table. We have the largest school district within British Columbia. And everything that we do in terms of decisions relate to our youth and what they're going to do in our future. We want to keep our youth here in our city. They're our brain trust, they're future entrepreneurs, they're our future workers in our very diverse industry base that we have here in the city. So the simple act of marking that ballot is your democratic and economic right. And there's so many people around this world that are fighting for that privilege to vote, including women still in this world. So please, it's a call to action to each of you to urge everyone to vote. Advance voting begins October 5th, and voting day is October 15th. I'd also like to say the following before we begin officially with the candidates and our presenting sponsor representative, is we have lost in our world a true symbol of democracy. She committed a life of service, not only to Canada, but to the world. And that is Queen Elizabeth II. Our nation still mourns and will continue to mourn her death. And September 19th is her funeral. And I know that the world will be watching. So I just wanted to recognize the immense commitment and dedication of her service to Canada and also to our world. So now I'd like to recognize and ask our presenting sponsor representative to come forward. He's with IOM Property Group. He's a major economic ingredient in terms of building this city through his firm. And he's a Surrey Board of Trade Board Director. Please help me welcome Mr. Rickman.
What an introduction. Thanks, thanks Anita. Yes, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Rickman. I am Director of Development at IOM Property Group. It's a local land development and construction organization. I am also proudly a director for the Surrey Board of Trade. That being said, today I would like to represent myself in a capacity as a citizen of our city. I live here, I work here, I play here, I raise my children here. I am a proud citizen of our city. That being said, I'm also a product of our education in Surrey as well. And growing up in the Surrey education process in 90s definitely taught me a few lessons. Some I can share, some I cannot. The ones I can share, though, is one thing that was drilled into me is that if I saw something that needed to be changed, it was my responsibility, my duty, to step up and do something about it. And to the candidates that are here today, we may not always see eye to eye on policies. We may not see eye to eye on what is of more importance or less importance. But we can see eye to eye is on the democratic process. And the representation here for you, all of you, I applaud all of you for taking a stand and stepping up for what you believe in yourselves and what should be the future of our organization and our community. So thank you to the candidates, thank you for the people in the audience, those of us watching via live stream. And thank you so much to the Surrey Board of Trade for hosting this event. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Rick. And I'm a product of the Surrey School System as well. Class of 91, Guilford Park Secondary. And now I'm the President and CEO of the Surrey Board of Trade for 17 years. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming. I really appreciate all of you for attending. It takes great courage to run for political office. And I think we all need to recognize that. And you're wanting to commit yourself to duty and to service to your community. So a round of applause for our candidates on stage. So I want everyone to be really excited about the Surrey School Trustee candidates because, as I mentioned, they make an immense commitment and also to the future of our city, to ensure that our youth are taken care of. So I want you to be excited about this election as it relates to our Surrey School Trustees. So each of the candidates, I believe we have 12 candidates that are running for this year's Surrey Local Election Campaign through the school trustee process. They will be responding to questions we've gathered in advance from our members from the Surrey Board of Trade, the South Asian Business Association, our advocacy teams. Given the tight timeframe, we have a process that we're going to engage in. And we want to make sure that you hear the broad base of issues that they're facing or could face and what their responses would be to those. So each candidate has been given a number from 1 to 3, I believe. And I'm going to call out the numbers. And then you're going to go to the microphone and respond to the same question that I provide to you. And then we'll go to the next group, another question, and so on and so forth. Any questions, candidates? You're all clear? Very good. Our timekeeper, Jas Roop, will hold up a yellow folder at 45 seconds to give candidates 15 seconds to finish their comments. When the red folder is up, the candidate's time is up and we move to the next candidate. We are very strict on the time. Attendees do not disturb the timer at any time during the program. We're going to finish the program with two-minute closing remarks from each of the candidates. And let me introduce your Surrey School Trustee candidates this evening. Please stand as your name is called. Lisa Alexis. Terry Allen, not here, Balbir Gurn. Bob Holmes. Jasbir Narwal. Naseema Nastush. Mary Ann Pine. Dupinder Saran. Bobby Taylor. Gary Thind. And Gary Timascheck. And Tony Rabello. Thank you so much for attending. All right, well, let's begin, everyone. So I'm going to ask Group One to come forward to the microphones. Your question is, if you can just tell the audience a little bit about why you think running for school trustee is so important to our economic future. Lisa.
I'm sorry, Board of Trade and the sponsors. I think it's so important to run for school board for our economic future. Surrey is the largest growing city in the province. We are the largest school district in the province. We're the largest employer in the province. And people are really, have got a keen eye on Surrey. And Surrey is just such a great place because we're such a diverse community. And I think people all around the world, and particularly in Canada, really look towards us. And I'm excited, if elected, to be able to help contribute, to add to the programs that are already existing from the existing board that's been longstanding. And, you know, also work with the teachers and city council and the province in regards to advocating for more programs also, more extracurricular programs, more after...
Bob.
So Surrey students are important to our economic future because they are our economic future. They're our social future. They are the future of Surrey. Nothing can be more important, really, than our students. They'll be the ones working here in Surrey. They'll be the ones living in Surrey. They'll be the ones telling other people what a great place Surrey is and why they need to come to Surrey. That's why we have extensive programming throughout the district for career advancement, for career education, to have them out there seeing what opportunities are for them in Surrey. And there are many, many opportunities here in Surrey. Really, they are our future. And that's why we have thousands of employers in our database that we contact all the time. We have kids out on job placements, learning what great opportunities they have in Surrey. And really, you can do just anything you want to, whatever opportunity you want to find, whether it's in the arts, whether it's in the trades, whatever you might want to go into as a young person, it's here in Surrey, and that's what our students need to know.
Mary Ann.
Thank you. Running for schools trustee in this district is so important. Surrey has grown so much, as you've heard, and the face of Surrey has changed over the years. For us as trustees, when we look at our children now and we look at the future that we want to create for them, it's extremely important that we recognize that as much as running for mayor, as much as running for council, that this is a very, very important job that we're here, representing ourselves to do. As a grandmother and a mother, and having gone through a system not in Surrey, but seeing my children and my grandchildren now going to school in Surrey, I can't think of a better job that one would want to do than to be a school trustee and to bring our...
Bobby.
...our economic growth, our children are our future. We are teaching them all. They are going to be out there in the workforce. I watched my eldest graduate from Lord Tweeds Mayor this year, and I watched 340 grads with their little spiel stating they're physiotherapists, teachers, kinesthetologists. But not only that, we have the vulnerable folks out there that may not be in that typical box. We will always need somebody to work at McDonald's. We will always need somebody to bag our groceries. And those are those opportunities. I'm also running to set the example for the youth that we can do this. We can make a difference and we can lead by example.
Thank you so much. You may be seated. And Group Number Two, you're next. Balbir will actually have you come up. All right, your question is related to the immense development that's happening in our city. And that's great for economic development, but in concert with that, we need school infrastructure. If you are elected as a school trustee, how are you going to work with the city of Surrey to ensure that there is school infrastructure keeping in pace with the development of our city? Balbir, you are first.
Okay, thank you, Anita, and thank you for organizing the debate and to the sponsors as well. So Surrey is growing rapidly, probably about 1,500 people a month. The figures are all wrong. So as a researcher and as an academic, I look at the numbers from various places. So we get some figures that say 1,500 a month. We get other projections that say we're getting about 6,800 to 8,600 people a year. And then we have the school board numbers, which say we're only getting 1,000 students a year. So to me, first of all, we have to have good data that shows projection. And with that data, we have to work alongside with the city to see what their plans are for construction, so we know how many homes are going up. And with knowing that, we have to work together and purchase land before the land values go up, before they're approved. Because otherwise, if we're buying them after, we're taking away money that can be used for school.
Jasbir.
Thank you very much, Surrey Board of Trade, for this opportunity. Yes, it's true, Surrey is developing at a very large pace. And 1,000 people are coming. And we need more spaces in schools. And, you know, everywhere there is crowding and we need, you know, provincial funding. And moreover, that, as trustee, as I have always, you know, I have a firm opinion that we should, you know, work as a, you know, bridge between the business community, between the parents and the government. So we need right advocates to present the case and get more sources and more money for the development of city and our school building and infrastructure. Thank you very much.
Tony.
Thanks for having us here, Anita, and everyone else here. I think we have to work collaboratively with the city of Surrey and with the groups, the construction owners, the property developers. We need to work with everyone. The province is key. We have to lobby to the provincial government. We have too many, sorry. We have a lot of growth in this city. And if we continue to not lobby the provincial government for more funding, it would be great to continue to build the schools, but we also need the people to put them in there. We need the actual workers, we need teachers, we need administrators, we need QP staff workers, we need, we need... And the students will come. But ultimately, we all have to work together and have hard conversations, be very transparent on what we need to do, and work collaboratively. Thank you.
Gary.
So I'm very glad with the working relationship we have with the current mayor and council. So last couple of years, we've been trying to develop these relationships more stronger. And the approach lately is that the ministry sits on the table, the mayor and councillor sits on the table, school board sits on the same table. And then we have changed our approach of going proactive. So we are buying land where the development is not done yet. So we are buying the land cheaper as we did in Portcals. So the approach is changing. You know, the city is growing. Our current demand from the Ministry of Education is $1.5 billion and in excess of that, to build new schools and to enhance our existing schools. So we'll continue to advocate on behalf of the Surrey residents. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You may be seated. And Group Number Three, you're next. That's all the remaining candidates, I believe. Thank you so much. So my question to you is, we want to know your perspective on arts and culture as a mandatory part of curriculum in the Surrey School District. Because we know at the Surrey Board of Trade, we've been advocating for that to be a mandatory part of our K-12 education curriculum because arts and culture enhance the livability of our city. What's your perspective on arts and culture education? Go ahead.
Thank you, Anita. Thank you, Surrey Board of Trade. Thank you, the sponsor. It is very important that we involve parents and get parents' input in this when we are teaching something in Surrey School Board because parents are the true political party when it comes to education and upbringing of the kids. And I believe teaching art and culture are very important for students. And we have to advocate for that. And school should focus on things that improve and promote diversity and culture.
Thank you. Dupinder.
Thank you. Thank you, Anita, Surrey Board of Trade and all the sponsors and all the individuals here to hear what we have to say today. As a parent, as a registered nurse, and as a community member of over 40 years here, born and raised in Surrey, I truly appreciate when somebody's advocating for the arts and culture side and diversity of our city here. The city has developed over time, as we all know. Population has grown, as we all know, but that's not where it ends. We have diversity in our system here. So in order to incorporate or be inclusive and have everybody feel a part of this community, arts and culture is a very good way of collaborating and very good way of bringing our community and unity together in this system. And, you know, advocacy on the funding side for that is very important because if children are in touch with their roots, their culture, the arts that we have, and mental health...
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Anita, and thank you to the sponsors and, of course, all the attendees to this, all candidates dialogue tonight. Arts and culture is incredibly important. It is what creates the fabric of our community, of our society. And it already is a big part of our school system. We have lots of celebrations throughout the district and individual schools, as well as district-wide, to celebrate the various cultures in our system. We also have the arts piece. We have intensive fine arts programs throughout the district. We have many band programs, all kinds of programs for students who want to enroll in those kinds of things, or parents who want their children to enroll in those kinds of things. They're available there for us. I have always been a strong proponent of arts within our schools. I attend as many band performances and play performances and those kinds of things as I possibly can get to. And I will always encourage the, for students to enroll in those programs and to take part in them. Not every student wants that, but for those who want it, we offer it and will continue to offer it. Our board supports that kind of education as part of a public education system here in Surrey.
Thank you very much. You may be seated, and we're back to Group Number One at the microphone, please. So your question is related to Surrey being the highest newcomer and refugee destination within British Columbia. What do you think the opportunities are to enhance inclusionary practices within the Surrey School District? Lisa.
Well, I think we just touched on it a little bit with the Arts and Cultures Program. And I have also been really encouraged with my children that are in the Surrey School District that are participating in these different programs. I was also at a back-to-school event recently and for low income at Quatlin Park Secondary. And 75% of the people that came were not able to speak English. So we did have translator there, which was really great. So it's really important that we have translators in the school district, that we have additional ESL workers, that we have additional ELL workers. Like this is so crucial in our district right now because I think it's like 60 or 70% that are coming from non-English speaking languages or first language at home. So Surrey needs to continue to expand on the existing programs. We have new programs, new curriculum for that.
Thank you. Bob.
So it's early in the school year yet, so we don't have the final numbers. Right now, it's looking like this is going to be our largest year of growth in many years. So this is really a critical question. The first step, really, when newcomers come to our city, is our welcome center. That's where we are able to bring our kids in. We're able to find out where our students are at, where are their English skills? What are their families doing? We support families there as well. We have families who come here with no English skills, with no real skills on how to do anything, how to navigate the system here in Surrey or in Canada in general. So we have people who help them through all of that work. A lot of that funding comes from the federal government, which we advocate for on a regular basis and is very much appreciated. We need that funding to help with that. In addition, then we have many different programs in our schools. We have our Safe Schools Program. We have, right now, we're working on an anti-racism initiative that's going to go over multiple years. Really a problem we need to deal with a lot in Surrey and really everywhere in Canada. So these are all things we'll continue to work on in the coming years.
Thank you so much, Mary Ann.
Thank you. It's one thing to say that we are welcoming and inviting to refugees and people who come from different countries. But at the end of the day, I think one of the problems that they face is the fact that when they do come here, they are not being recognized for the skills that they actually come with. Their first language may not necessarily be our first language, or they may have three or four languages that they speak. And they are intelligent, they are articulate, they have skills that some of us with one language don't have. And I think if we are going to be welcoming and inclusive, that we have to look at our refugees, at our immigrants as being more than people that need a handout, but being recognized for what they truly bring to our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
I think as we have more and more families coming over as refugees, we also need to look at these students in schools and have the teachers and support staff have the opportunity for training for trauma-informed practices. Many of these youth are coming in from trauma, from war, from, without, I have witnessed, students who've come into the school who see somebody else's food and take it off of their desk. So we know that kids are naturally inclusive. And that can also be set the tone with the adults around them to continue that. I've also seen where there's been families who've been reaching out for supports that don't have access to that interpreter, and they don't know their rights. And so in partnership with those welcome centers, I think that the Surrey School District can work closer in allowing those families to recognize what is the student right and what is their family rights, especially when the families may also be facing homelessness.
Thank you so much. You may be seated. And Group Number Two, you're up at the microphone, please. So your question is related to a segment of our children in the K-12 system, go to school hungry. We donated $10,000 in the past to the Surrey School Meals Program so that kids can have breakfast before they start their school day. What else do you think needs to be done to support and elevate that program so that every child in our city, no matter at what income level their family may be at, has all of the opportunities as any other child? So Balbir, over to you.
Thank you, Anita. Food is definitely important for education because there's a, I mean, if you're not healthy and you don't have food, you can't eat. But recently, or this year anyways, we got extra money for Surrey Schools, 7.3 million out of the 64. And that'll help this year, but we need ongoing funding. So that's one thing would be to push for more funding. The other would be to work with all our community partners. There's multiple organizations and businesses who are willing to step up if they know that there is a need to help feed the children. if they know that there is a need uh to help uh feed the children. Uh so we could definitely do that as well. Food sources, um there are also different restaurants that could donate. I mean, we could look at donations, but we could look at businesses as well. So working collaboratively would be the way to solve some of the problems. The others, of course, is the levels of government to see what funding we can get from them.
Thank you, Jespear.
Thank you very much, Anita. Um as you know, food is very important. And it said that uh in our schools, we bring as teacher and as parents uh the best from child's bodies, weight and mind. And if the child is hungry, if the student are hungry, they are not getting, you know, uh quality food. It's a, it's a, it's not possible for their development and learning to be effective. Um so it's most important. If uh our team comes in, we will devote the uh sources that we got from the provincial government and uh we will collaborate with the businesses and uh all stakeholders to, to help. And it, it will be very on our number one priority, I would say. They need very good food and nasty food. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you. I, I think there's, there's three key, three key things that have to continue to happen. Uh one, work with community partners. Uh two, continue to lobby for more funding through municipal and provincial governments. Um and three, also work with the business group, business community in, in Surrey. Um but I think there's one one thing that I think we, we can look at, look at outside of the box. Um we have students, we have students in high school who we can create leaders and, and actually make, make programs where they can actually help uh promote what we need in, in the Surrey School System. Uh everyone needs to eat. Everyone says a good breakfast, you, you gotta have breakfast to start off the day. And a lot of, a lot of our kids are going to school hungry. And I, I think we need to reach within as well. Uh we need to look outside of the box to, to, to really solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you for the question, Anita. Very close to my heart. Um I think funding is fine. We can generate millions of dollars through different resources, but we need to get to the root cause of this problem. And we need to uh get resources available for the low-income families from all levels of the government, the provincial and the federal. We need to create jobs. We, we need to support those uh high-risk families, uh the most vulnerable people out there. Um the provincial government needs to bring small industries in, in our cities. So we can create more jobs for those families who are living on streets and stuff like that, who don't have money to feed their kids. Our business development department is doing awesome job, uh raising funds from different uh levels of uh uh like city um through your business uh partners and from local charities, but we need to get to the root.
Thank you very much. You may be seated and group number three, please come forward. There has everyone's, yep, there you go. Dupinder. So your question is related to the B C government. Are we getting our fair share of funding from the B C government given the growth of our school district? And how would you work with the B C government to get our fair share? Nusima.
Thank you for the question. Uh we don't get our fair share of uh funding from the B C government because Surrey is growing and lots of refugees and newcomers come here and they need um English as a second language. And we, we are in need of teachers' assistance and we don't get enough funding. What I would do, I will collaborate closely with uh stakeholder and government official to advocate for more funding for Surrey.
Thank you very much, Dupinder.
Um so that last question touched my heart and that's one reason it took him a while to get back up here, but um we on the, like if elected in, basically it's a collaborative process, as everybody's here has been saying, and I'm going to be fair to the previous um trustees here, you know, working and advocating with government isn't always um easy and trying to get the funding you need to set it in place is not as an easy process. You do have to go through some upheavals and hills and obstacles. Uh if elected in, I would definitely, um you know, I already do this in the community as well as an activist. Um actively sitting down, doing roundtables and trying to get the government to understand the key concerns, the root causes, as one of the trustees has mentioned here. Getting to the bottom of what is causing um certain uh concerns and problems in our community and how to advocate for that funding is very important and you need to have good relations with provincial, federal and local municipal government. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Yes, thank you, Anita. Uh the first question is, are we getting our fair share? It's proportional throughout the province. So Surrey certainly gets our share uh when you look at the big pie. But public education in the province of British Columbia is underfunded and that's where our role as trustees in our district particularly is to make sure that we're dialoguing with the provincial government. This board continuously meets with the Minister of Education on an annual base, basis with the city council as well. And we also meet with our M L A's who of course represent Surrey at the provincial government level to make sure that they understand everything that we are asking for, whether it be for operating funds, whether it be for additional resources for special needs children, or whether it be for operating, or sorry, capital funds to make sure that we've got the schools in our, in our district. We're very happy about capital. It's been moving fairly well. We opened, we've been pleased to open six new schools during the last term and we're going to keep advocating for more in the years to come.
Thank you so much. You may be seated and group number one, you're back at the microphones. This is good exercise. So your question is related to portables in Surrey. Is that quality education? Is it a problem? What's your perspective, Lisa?
Uh my perspective is that the portable issue has been voiced by a lot of parents and teachers in the community. Um it does rain here six to eight months out of the year, so it is a lot to be going back and forth for the children and for the teachers. There's not always um the same, like there, there's not always a bathroom in the portable. So then they have to go into the school um in the elementary grades. I know my son went to Coast Meridian, there was no um washrooms in the portable there. And um even in twenty eighteen, when I ran, this was a big issue then. And it, there's more portables now than there was then, um but we have more students than we had then. And you know, we just need to have a board that continues to advocate for uh future planning, to make more spaces um and you know, try and create more spaces for the kids and the teachers.
Thank you. Bob.
So to answer your questions, yes and yes. Yes, it's a quality education. We have fantastic teachers that do wonderful work in portables. But yes, it's a problem for a number of reasons. Really a portable, it's not the same kind of environment. You're separated from the other kids. It's really not ideal. Our teachers do a fantastic job with them, but it's not ideal. But I'm going to change focus to a little bit, a different uh uh focus on this problem, which would be the cost to the Surrey School District. So those portables cost more every year to heat, to light, to clean. What that means is millions of dollars out of our budget every year. And where is that coming from? It's coming from the classrooms. So we're looking at five to seven million dollars every year. This is something we advocate for constantly. We will continue to advocate for and we do appreciate what the government has done. We made a lot of progress in the last few years. We need to make more. As we see more and more growth, this will have to continue. And that's why our capital project office, we're with the ministry and city staff is so fantastic and helps us make progress in that regard.
Thank you, Maryann.
Thank you. Speaking about the portables, it's not something that I can tell you that I'm really versed on, but what I would say is that if we're doing everything that we need to do for our children and our future, then we need to do everything that we need to do to put them in safe spaces, spaces where they are able to learn, where they're not having to stress about going to a bathroom that's not nearby. Um whatever the challenges are, we want to know that at the end of the day, we are putting them in the best position possible to learn. And if it means that at some point we have to do a way, we should be doing a way with the portables and that's something that we need to do now. Like I said, I don't know enough about it to really speak to it, but I can assure you that my colleague to my left is going to be able to help me out with this question.
Thank you very much, Bobby.
So are portable's a problem? Yes, more from a funding perspective, as our candidate Bob Holmes had mentioned here. I do agree with him that that is funding that could be used better. But at the end of the day, if you were to ask a student, did it matter to them? It didn't. Maybe they had to walk into the school to go to the bathroom. Maybe they had some wet shoes. I'd like to honestly ask, who didn't go into a portable in their school career? I was. Did I notice a difference? To be honest, in grade seven, when I got to be in the portable, I was pretty excited. Um but that's not to say that that funding could not be used in a more meaningful way. I do know that for class compositions, my son just entered grade eight, there are nine portables on the site. The math classes are all out there, but two. So he had two choices of classroom teachers to stay within the school so that they did not have to create a ramp. Again, the ramp would be nice, but I'd rather see the funding used better.
Thank you very much. You may be seated and group number two, please. Your question is related to youth and gang life. What would you do to, and it's a holistic perspective in terms of supports that are needed. It, it involves parents communicating to them, it involves teachers, it involves peers and so many other ingredients to ensure that our youth are not engaging in gang activity. But you as a school trustee, if you are elected, what would you do about this issue that we're facing? Balbeer.
Thank you for the question. What I know about gangs and activities and who is recruited, it's usually those people who are not connected or don't have a safe adult for them. So to me, the focus should be on prevention, where we would create an atmosphere in schools, a culture where every child is respected, connected and feel safe. So if we can do that, then less uh individuals will be recruited into gangs. But if they're already in gangs, we need a whole uh three hundred and sixty degree, degree approach. We need all the ministries involved. We need policing and justice involved. We need every uh employee, uh every parent and the entire community. Because if the community sends a message that drugs and gangs are not acceptable, then they don't get that uh star power which is associated with them right now, which young children see and they go towards. So I think there's a number of things we can do, but we really should get at the root cause.
Thank you, Jespear.
Thank you very much, Anita. Yes, it's a big problem. And uh you know, especially in Surrey, um we have seen it's happening again and again. And uh I think we, if I'm lectured, we need to focus on the root causes. We need uh to handle it at, at a counseling level. And uh you know, I have the experience, those who go to gangs and do violence, always they don't feel connected. If they're connected, they don't do that. So it need to involve the families, it need to be invol- involvement of the students. And uh you know, acting as a real bridge between them. And I will try to do my best to bring all the stakeholders on one platform so that we can eradicate this problem. Thank you.
Tony.
Thank you. Um yeah, gangs is a big issue in, in schools and life in general. I think in schools, what happens with the kids is there's kids that are coming to this country as a new immigrant. They don't have that support, uh especially kids that are refugees, don't know the language too well and may get into a bad group. And we need to offer those programs. We still need to continue to work with the policing uh here in Surrey. Uh we need to work with community groups. Um but we also have to create more programs in schools for the kids. Um I was a big part of sport in, when I was in high school and um was given the opportunity at grade nine to start coaching by a teacher. And I coached my whole life and that kept me away from some of the bad guys that ultimately were in school. So there's, there's ways we can do it. There's ways we can empower our kids and, and get them to be leaders and, and show the other kids in schools that gangs aren't cool at the end of the day.
Thank you, Gary.
So prevention is better than the cure and I firmly believe that we have to think outside the box now. We have to take different approach. That's why I met with Mr. Noel Lipinski, who's the head of the Surrey Police. Uh he's the chief for the Surrey Police. Uh in my one-hour interview, he threw so many good ideas of, of having the school resource officers at every high school, two uniform officers in each school uh that will not only encourage the youth to get involved uh with the police force or get a uniform job for themselves, but it will also uh keep those gangsters and drug dealers away from our school boundaries. So I think it is very, very important that we take new approach. Uh we think outside the box. We've been trying to do this for years, but we have to think outside the box and uh take different approach and look at the other city models, what the other cities are doing, especially Delta School District. Uh Mr. Lipinski's experience with Delta is great.
Thank you very much. You may be seated in group number three, please, to the microphone. So your question is related to communication with parents uh and with teachers. During the pandemic, the Surrey School District was a leader uh in terms of communicating to media around COVID protocols um to parents, uh to teachers. But the pandemic isn't over. It's not going to be the last pandemic that we have or a major issue that parents and teachers are going to face. What are you going to do if elected as a school trustee to enhance communication to parents and teachers?
For the, thank you for the question. I, as a school trustee, I will represent the parents and community, not a special interest group. And I will work very closely with the parents to um communicate, to open communication between teachers and the parents because parents are very important part of their kids' education. And also, communication is very important and about the, their, what is taught in school and uh that's it.
Thank you, Dupinder. Thank you, Anita, for the question. So uh again, I'm gonna just break it down to the fact that I already am involved in the community. And I think involvement and engaging in the community prior to you even taking a role like this is, plays great importance because you already have those connections. You already know some teachers, you already know parents. And being a parent's voice is very, very um important and on advocating at many different levels. And I already currently do that with many in the school system. When children are having or families are having problems, they may contact me on a one-on-one basis. I go over and I assist where I can and when I can and how I can. I've also been a part of a pack. So playing uh, you know, engaging parents and pack is very important. I think right now, currently with the COVID and everything else that's taken place, we're lacking that again and we need to get that engagement going again so that parents have a voice and can speak and can interact with the staff and not feel that disconnection that they're feeling right now. I think at all levels collaboratively, we can do this. We just need to get it back on track. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Thank you, Anita, for acknowledging uh the work of the district, in particular through Dr. Tenny's uh communication pieces during COVID. Uh communication, I've worked in, in business for, for profit uh and nonprofit organizations for over forty years and also been in public office a number of years. And the one thing that is never ever, you get to the end is effective communication. It's always a journey. So there's always more that we can do to try and make sure that we're getting the message out and communicating with parents and people in our community. We'll always do better as best we possibly can. We do a lot now. There's a lot of communication that happens now, but we've got to, to make sure that we're abreast of the most current methods of communication, whether that's Facebook or whether it's Twitter, uh TikTok, Instagram, you name it. There's so many things that are out there today. And four years from now, there may even be different methods of communication. And we've got to make sure we stay on top of that and try to communicate with our parents as best we can and the language that best suits them, that best connects with them. And we'll continue to endeavor to do better. Uh that's our commitment uh that we've always done and we will continue to do that for the foreseeable future.
Thank you very much. You may be seated in group number one. You're back up. You're doing very well, all of you. So your question is related to the Board of Trade's advocacy to reduce the voting age to sixteen. What's your perspective on that, Lisa?
Um I mean, I think it's important um for young adults at that age or adolescents to recognize the importance of uh participating in voting and uh elections. It, you know, it's a new concept and I think anytime there's something new, um there's different things to consider. I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea. I think it's a good idea for people, young people to get involved in their community, for them to know that their voice matters. I think um teenagers need teenagers need to know that they, um, their voices can be heard. You know, like, it's really important as a young person to know that adults are listening to them and um more than anything, they want to be heard. So um I, I do like the idea. Actually, this is the first I've heard of it, but that's a great suggestion.
Thank you very much. Bob?
As I'm sitting up, standing up here, I'm, I'm still with mixed feelings on this. I've heard the Board of Trades advocacy around this idea. I think the, the intent is a wonderful idea. I think that the youth, as we've talked about earlier, the youth is our future. It's important that our youth are politically engaged and stay so. I think a lot of us come out of school very socially engaged, very ready to change the world. And then life kind of gets hold of you, and not in a bad way, but you get busy and, and you start to forget about that kind of thing. So I think engaging our youth in uh, in, in politics, in social issues at a young age is important. I think we do a lot of work in that regard already. I think it's important we continue with that. Whether rolling back voting age to sixteen is the way to do that. I'm honestly, I'm excited on that. I'd like to hear more about it and talk to people about it a little bit more. Um, I can see pros and cons to it, uh, but I really appreciate any kind of effort to get our youth more involved in this whole process and understanding how it works and understanding why it's important and why their voting matters.
Thank you very much. Mary Ann?
Thank you. I too, um, I have mixed feelings about the age. I don't think the age is the issue right now. I think if we look at um voter turnout, generally speaking, there is a serious lack of interest and more so for school trustees. I think what is important is that education piece that is missing to get people interested in voting, for them to understand the issues and understand how they're impacted. I've spoken to friends since I've started on this campaign, um campaign road, so to speak. And I'm speaking to people who have no idea what a school trustee does. They have no idea. They've never voted for a school trustee. So I think the education piece all around is important. The age, not so sure about that, but I do remember me at sixteen, I could have voted.
Bobby?
Idea to give that opportunity to the youth to be able to be with their peers and have fluid conversations at sixteen. Let's be honest, at sixteen, we're giving them keys to a car. Let's look at a vehicle. That's a weapon if it's used appropriately and it can take a life. So let's have them learn about democracy in a safe way where they're all gonna get the same messaging, because it could potentially, and of course, this is at a Ministry of Education level, be a part of the curriculum that's taught. And imagine as those youth grow and they're empowered to know that their voices can be heard, the voter turnout that could come. We're entrusting our sixteen-year-olds out there with jobs, vehicles. They're staying home alone overnight. We are putting them in the role of adults in a safe capacity. Why not allow them to use their voice to be amplified? Our kids are smarter than we were at that age because they have the internet in some ways.
Thank you so much. You may be seated in group number two, please. So in Surrey, based upon our population growth and our growing young population especially, we have a lack of accessible and affordable childcare spaces. If you were elected school trustee, how would you utilize existing school infrastructure to also be utilized as childcare spaces? Bob here?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea to use our schools as community, um, places for communities to, to be and uh and get involved. And that's where I think we could use um some of our spaces, especially where there's under enrollment in schools uh for daycare centers or for pre and after school. We can also involve other agencies. Um, funding is always an issue. There are some pilot projects happening right now in, in Surrey for daycare. Uh, but we should be looking at community partners as well. And then I know port, what portables are costly, but if there are no spaces within schools, we could use portables uh for, for preschool and also um for daycares. For daycares also, if we could get um older students involved or grandparents involved, it's another great way of community building at schools. Uh, so there is benefits to having.
Thank you, Jess Beer?
Thank you very much, Anita. It's very important. And uh, we, as I've said, we need a collaborative approach. And uh, we need to involve the community unless we need the, uh, you know, don't involve the community. And as school trustee, um, if I'm elected, my job is to work collaboratively. And uh, I know we need more spaces everywhere and uh, you know, we don't have, but uh, we can, as a team, we can work and uh, we can be more innovative. Then we are put our head together as a community, we can do much better. And uh, um, as a team, we will, we will focus on that issue. And we will do our best to, to solve this issue.
Thank you. Tony?
Thank you. Uh, I, I think uh childcare and daycare space is um, if we've got the space, let's use it. Uh, I think that'll help with a lot of the parents that are paying a substantial amount of money right now for before and after school daycare and daycare alone. Uh, there's been a ten-dollar-a-day uh childcare campaign uh from many different unions in B C and I know there's different districts that are going, uh, doing pilot projects this year on it. Uh, I think it, it, it actually helps with a few things, especially in the elementary schools where we can use the spaces, but we can also use the existing staff. And that staff can get paid from a different funding model, from the provincial funding model. And it actually helps those kids that live in that area be part of that community, be part of that school sooner, see the teachers, see the EAs, see all the support staff workers and be made part of it.
Thank you, Gary.
So Anita, I don't know if you know that uh the early childhood portfolio is under Ministry of Education now. So that means that portfolio comes to school district. And we have added twelve new school sites uh since last year in Surrey School District where we have started the childcare. And we are going to add six hundred new childcare spaces this fall and thousand new spaces next year. So there's a lot been getting done on this aspect, uh especially that portfolio being given to the Ministry of Education now. And school districts have given the power to use the schools as the early childhood ed- uh education side. So we are working uh very actively on that aspect. And I'm sure by next year, uh, we'll, we'll reach our goal that is being given to Surrey School District. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Group number three, you're up. And before I ask you your question, we're just gonna add a little different element to this uh after your question is posed. Uh, so to the next group, group number one. Uh, you can pose a question to any candidate on stage that you wish. So you want to start thinking about a question that you want to pose to a member within your group. Uh, so, but let's uh finish with group number three first. Your question is related to international students. Uh, tell us your perspective about uh international students within our Surrey School District and their outcomes relating to our workforce challenges that we're facing as a business community. Nisima?
Thank you for the question. International students bring lots of revenue in uh, in our school districts and uh they, I consider them as an asset because they are learning English and they are staying with families and promoting our, promoting Canada, and it's very important. And the reason that uh we should have, um, the impact that we have that because um classrooms are already oversized and overpopulated. This is the issue that we should consider. Other, other than that, I think international students are very beneficial for us.
Thank you. Dupinder?
Thank you for that. Um, that comes with my experience working with international students. Um, I'm a founder of One Voice Canada, and we support, advocate and provide resources for international students. Um, the question being within the public school system now, majority of the students come at a, at a stage when they're already hitting college or university. There are a number that do come earlier than that. However, um, I think when it comes to international students, like Nisima has said here, um, bringing, they bring in a lot of revenue for our country. Um, along with that revenue though, comes the accountability on our part. Uh, as a community, we should be providing the resources they require as students in our system. And I feel sometimes there's a lack of that, or there's uh, if there are resources available, they're not aware of them. That is the key concept that I keep hearing, and a lot of students reach out to us at all times, and they're stating that they don't know where to turn to, what to do, what kind of resources are out there for them. And when it comes to the employment side, you know, exploitation is a big thing.
Thank you very much, Gary.
Thank you very much, uh Anita. And international students are an important part of our society, quite frankly, because they have, bring that opportunity to bring new people to our country. And through the uh Surrey School System, we're able to help them get educated and get prepared to become active citizens here in, in Canada. However, uh, then they do provide a strong revenue stream for us. However, we've got a space issue in Surrey that we still, uh, we talked about portables earlier. We've still got a lot of portables in this district. So before we can uh incant the number of students we bring uh from international students, we've got to make sure we look after our home base, if you will, and, and be able to house all the students we've got here. So it's important, absolutely, and we do have several uh, over a thousand students typically every year of international students, and we will continue to do that. But we've got to strike that balance to make sure we're able to serve the community well, the existing community well.
Thank you very much. You may be seated in group number one. You're up. So Lisa, you can ask any of the candidates that are standing at the microphone a question. Just choose one and state your question.
So it's for Bob. Um, my question is, what benefits do you think um having new trustees could add to the existing school board?
I think always any new voices are always, always have some value. I think there's uh, there's benefit to experience, there's benefit to having done the job. But there are also benefits to being someone new, bringing perspective. I guess the important thing is, is for all of our new candidates, that they, they come to the table, they come to these forums, other places, and let us know what new voice they're going to bring. To have a voice is one thing, but to have some values and uh and some beliefs behind that, which I'm sure everyone does, is really what's important. So it's one thing to have a new voice at table, it's another thing to have a new voice with value at the table. So I think that's what potentially new candidates can bring.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Bob?
It wasn't meant to be tit for tat, but I wanted to ask one of the parents' voice, and so I'll ask the question to you, Lisa. Um, I'm, I know there's a lot of talk around um parents' voice in schools uh and our parents being heard and what is their role? So my question would be, where do you see the line? We have educators who are professionals of what they do. Um, and as school trustees, we're governors. We're not, we're not there to be um interfering maybe in, in educational experts. What do you see as a line sort of uh between parent voice and also letting the teachers, the educators, the experts do their jobs?
Yeah, I think um, just like in any job that any person has, people have expertise in certain areas. Um, I think parents are, we're not perfect, but we know our kids better than a teacher does. Um, so I think it is important to have the dialogue between the both. Um, in regards to the board, um, I think it's good for the board to be open to hear parents' voices and also for them to hear teachers' perspectives, to hear PAC perspectives. Um, there's so many different views that you guys have, you know, you know, you hear them all the time, um, that you have to juggle meeting so many expectations. And I think um it is a fine line, um, from what I understand, but you just have to keep the dialogue open between each group.
Thank you very much. Mary Ann?
I've been told that the trustee's hands are pretty much tied, that uh it's more governance than anything else. My question to you is this, uh, you've served uh for some time now. If you had the power to change anything, anything in how um, how, how you govern or how you, you are in your role, what would that be?
So there's some truth to the fact that hands are tied, because it's a co-government role, the provincial government. Uh, funding is all set in place for us already, so we don't have a whole lot of control over the funding. I suppose if I could wave a magic wand and have control over anything, it would be to uh have more control of the funding piece. But that is a tricky matter. Nobody wants to pay more taxes. Uh, the government's always lacking for money. But to me, to have more control, we're the one level of government that has no control really, or very little control over our funding levels, and that's not just our board, of course, every board. So if I had something I could change, it would be some control over funding.
Thank you very much. Bobby?
I apologize, Bob. It's not a personal thing. My question is to you more around budgeting. Um, I am aware of the twenty uh twenty-one, twenty-two school year that there was a total of sixty-seven learning support teacher full-time positions cut, and that doesn't include all of the education assistance, support staff, psychologists, SLPs, sorry, speech-language pathologists, physiotherapists, occupational therapists. These are pivotal parts of education to help those vulnerable children that go right down to those refugee children, those early English language learners. Going forward, what do you propose to be done to help support those vulnerable students?
So diverse learners are certainly funding. Uh, education for diverse learners is a, is always a big problem. I think almost every district uh in the province spends far, far more on diverse learners than what they get in specialized funding for that. Uh, and these kids are every bit as important and need all the support that we can possibly give them. I, I don't, what I know as far as funding around that is our funding, the, the amount of money we put into those categories increases every year. The issue is that really the, the funding specialized for that is not increasing. And the fact is, when the government rolls out their funding announcements, they're not, I won't say misleading, but they, they're they sometimes don't quite tell the whole story as far as that goes. And the, the fact of the matter is diverse learners' percentage of our student population is increasing all the time. So I believe we have to try to find new ways to help those students and continue advocating for more funding.
Great job, group number one. You may be seated. And group number two, you are up. Same process. And Bob here, you're first.
Okay, I have to think of a question now. Um, okay, question to Gary. Currently, what I'm hearing from parents is there are drug exchanges and vaping occurring in schools. And your board has been there for a number of years. What, what are you doing currently that isn't working and what do you think should be done?
Uh, thank you for the question, Bob. It's uh, as I said earlier, we need to think outside the box. We've been trying uh bringing new policies and trying to enhance the existing policies we have uh for schools uh um in terms of vaping and smoking and all those uh scenarios that kids adopt at schools. But we, as I said earlier, we need to think outside the box. That's why I think school resource officers are very, very important. Um, and we need to have at least two school resource officers in every high school, if not elementary school. The funding is again the major issue there. Uh, I don't know how uh we're gonna uh convince the provincial government to give us the funding for the school resource offices, but I think that would be a one good solution to um mitigate that this problem.
Thank, thank you very much, Jessica.
You very much, Anita. Uh, as uh Gary is representing presently this board and their slate is uh, you know, uh, three times old, almost for twelve years. My question to Gary is, so every time when we come here, we listen and see, uh, and we have questions, but always unmuted. So drugs, gang violence and bullying, every time it's increasing. And you have different questions, and in twelve years, it's going up, you have done nothing. Now what you can do in this term?
Uh, and my answer will stay the same, uh, that we are trying to think outside the box now. Uh, trying to work with the local police. We have the wraparound program in city uh that is a um, that is a segment, that's a solution uh to a problem, but we need to mitigate the uh, the root cause of it. So that's why I think the school resource officers are very important, put in every high school.
Thank you, Tony.
I guess it's gonna be picking on Gary night tonight. Uh, so uh, you said earlier, talked about uh opening up six new schools in the last four or five years. Um but we're the staff. There's, I know for a fact, there's been no staff uh in the maintenance departments that's been hired to, to continue to maintain those schools. There's no groundkeepers that have been hired in the last twenty years. You know, the trades with the QP support staff workers, they're falling behind. How are you going to fix that problem? Because if it doesn't get fixed, you will not have that staff there.
Yeah, so that's why I ran for provincial government last time, so I can get on that table and try to bring some changes. But yes, the funding comes from the provincial government. Our hands are tied. We don't get enough money. We want to put as many resources as the school requires or the maintenance department requires, but our hands are tied. We only have eight hundred ninety million dollars to work with. And every year, that's our mandate to balance that budget. We can't overspend because there are no other areas that we can create revenue from. So if the provincial government steps up and gives us more money, we would love to spend that money on schools, on maintenance and hiring more staff wherever it is required.
Thank you very much. And Gary, over to you.
Question from the floor.
If that's your wish.
Okay, I want to ask Ms. Penny Freddy the question. Can you share your experience working with the school board? How come you still have that energy in you? And how can we enhance our school system with your experience?
Hadn't come prepared to answer questions.
Neither do I.
I do still have a lot of energy and a lot of passion, which is why I'm here tonight, because I think, and I always have. I I served two terms on school board and one term as an education minister along the way. And it is the, any research across the world says that you get your biggest return on dollar, if you're making a business argument, you get your biggest return on a dollar. The younger you, if you start funding children at the very earliest age possible. So it speaks to the things that are going to happen in the school district under the ministry, what will now be the Ministry of Education and Child Care, around early intervention, around early child development. Those things that are so vital for how our society grows are formed when children are zero to five years of age. The school district doesn't usually even get to see those children until they're five. But with the possibility now of childcare, it means that we will see children at an age there, we can see the interventions that might be necessary or the enhancements that are necessary in a child's life to allow them to to thrive, to succeed, to be part of our society. So I mean, I come to all candidates meetings like this because I want to know, you know, what the perspective is from trustees on various issues. I like to hear from the audience on what their questions are, because there's a definition of school that I read somewhere, that school is four walls and a roof with our future inside. And that is what it is. And because I have grandchildren, one of which just got married, so as they get older quickly, but I still have two in the system. And I care very much. And if I had no grandchildren in the system, I would still care because it is about what Surrey's going to look like. And those are people who are going to make, for those younger than I am here, decisions about your pension, about where you live, about the kind of elder housing that might be available or cohousing that will be available for people. I want those kids to be the smartest, brightest decision makers I can possibly find. And that's why I'm here. Thanks for the question, Gary.
Thank you. You may be seated, group number two, please. And group number three, please come forward. And remember, as politicians, you do always have to decide on the spot on decisions or perspectives that you need to make. So this is a test for you if you do become elected as a school trustee. So Naseema, over to you.
So I I have to ask a question.
To someone on stage.
My question is to you. Okay, why gang violence and bullying is increasing in school? And what strategy you implement to stop them, to decrease them?
Yes.
Well, this is a similar question too, that were asked very similarly before, and my colleague trustee Thind answered that question. But from my perspective, it's very similar. But I think the thing we have to remember that this isn't just a school-based problem. It's a community problem, and we've all got to work together to find the solution. And you know, as others have said tonight, it's about getting to the root. It's about making sure we've got infrastructure that's not just school board responsibility, but city as well as provincial government and federal government responsibility to make sure that we keep our youth engaged in positive things. And that's going to mean money, because sure, it's fine for for it to say, get out and play sports and play baseball and soccer and dance and ice skating and all those things that are out there that a lot of kids do get involved in, which is good for them. But not every parent can afford that. And that's where the provincial government, the federal government, and to some extent, the city has to jump in and provide those kinds of supports for that.
Thank you. Dupinder, who do you choose?
So I'm gonna choose the current trustee again. Sorry, guys, we're putting you on the spot today. My question is going to be a little bit tough, to be honest, because in the last campaign when I ran, I also mentioned this. What do you feel about union endorsements or other endorsements? And how does that play into perspective of the actual candidate who's on stage or on hand with the abilities and experiences that they have on under their belt? How how do you feel about endorsements overall?
Hey, we live in a free society, so anybody or any organization can endorse whoever they so choose. I'm comfortable with that. I don't have a problem with that. Some people will be endorsed by some people or some individuals. Others may not be. So you know, it is what it is. I I don't have any issues with that.
Gary, who do you choose?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to direct my question to Naseema. The question is that we all are individuals. And certainly during this period of campaign, we're we're all expressing our opinions and responding to questions as individuals. But if you're successfully elected and you get together, there's seven people around our board. And at that point in time, it becomes a legal governance entity. So what will you do to make yourself part of that, to be a contributing member of that entity, to be able to make the best decisions possible for the students and the parents of Surrey?
Listening is very important. I will listen to all board members and I will communicate effectively with them. And this is very important.
Okay, thank you so much. You may be seated. And we're gonna go through the regular round right now of some questions that I have for you. So group number one, back to the microphone, please. September is accessibility month. If you were elected school trustee, how would you prioritize accessibility and support to teachers? That's persons with disabilities, hard of hearing, et cetera.
Just to clarify, so you're asking for accessibilities to teachers, how I'd prioritize.
Yeah, how would you support teachers in the classroom?
Yeah, I think the biggest thing would be to find out what the greatest needs are right now. I think every school will likely have different needs because we have different demographics in each pockets and there could be different, you know, needs for those with the accessibility restraints. So I think just trying to find out what those are, having a dialogue and then trying to find solutions for that.
Thank you, Lisa. Bob?
So this is an area where the size of Surrey really helps. We're very lucky to have a lot of new schools. So when you build a new school, you can bring in a lot of different accessibility options that weren't there in older schools. We're building a lot of accessible playgrounds. So those are certainly very important parts of this. But also the size of Surrey means that in a smaller district, it's hard to have one person to do specialized things. We can have entire departments. So we certainly have a number of specialists and teachers in these areas. We can always use more. And of course, the biggest problem right now, not the biggest, there's many, many different issues we deal with, but one problem right now, not just for us, for businesses as well, is hiring people. So of course, very specialized skills are going to be very much in demand across the province, across the country. So that's why we spend a lot of time and money on recruiting, on going out to to meet teachers and universities, to make sure we get them to Surrey, to bring in all the different specialist teachers, specialist educational assistants that we need here in Surrey.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you. At the end of the day, all children should be able to have whatever access they need, whatever their needs are. And I believe that each school, it has to be done on a case-by-case basis. There are all sorts of challenges that are being faced right now. We're talking about shortages, we're talking about funding, but at the end of the day, that doesn't answer the question for the child that is in need, for the child that does not have access. It also puts a teacher at a disadvantage, the teachers at a disadvantage as well, because they are not able to do their job as they would like to the job that they're there to be able to teach these children and to have them in a in a in a space that is comfortable and accessible to them. So each school, I believe, we need to look at them individually and address whatever needs that are necessary to make sure that they get the education that they need in the way that they need it. Thank.
Thank you, Bobby.
So what happens when you don't know what I'm saying? You don't have access. What happens when those students aren't in the classroom? They don't have an access to education. What happens when those teachers don't have the support staff to be able to help support those students in the classroom? It's not just accessible playgrounds, which is near to near to my heart, because I do live in that mobility world as well. It's about actually having the access to education for all students within the classroom. And that doesn't start with just looking at playgrounds or ramps. At the end of the day, a ramp is helpful for everyone. But we need to make sure that the access and the tools are in place for the staff to be able to support those students and their learning. So this starts with pro D days and maybe advocating to the provincial government for mandated pro D days around this.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Group number two, please. So the Surrey Board of Trade, we've enjoyed a long partnership with the Surrey School Board and the school district around entrepreneurship programming. Do you think that needs to be increased to ensure that our students are ready to meet the challenges of entrepreneurship or workforce pathways when they graduate from grade twelve? Belbeer?
Yes, I think in a short, the the programs need to be increased because what I see at the university level when I get those students is a lot of them don't know about finances or even how to budget. They will run short every month or every semester when they are trying to pay their tuition. So I think the more that we can have about balancing budgets, the entrepreneurship program that you already have. And also at KPU, we do have business programs that could also help in that with schools. And we do have dual credit courses where you get credit for taking the course at high school as well as university. And that's with a partnership with the with the school district. And also we have programs that any student can take if they're in grade eleven and twelve. And some of them are around business courses. So definitely expand those programs.
Thank you very much, Jasbeer.
Thank you very much, Anita. Surrey Board of Trade is doing a wonderful job and their involvement is welcome. And it should be expanded. If my cell phone, my team, parents' voice, we see, we are elected as trustees. Certainly, we would want Surrey Board of Trade more involved. And you know, at a, you are, you have already, you know, helping much and entrepreneur programs, you are doing much sport. And we will certainly need more from your part and more involvement because our kids, they need education, they need something, more tools to get when they get to grade two, some sort of implement for entrepreneurship. Thank you very much. We will need certainly more of your involvement.
Thank you very much, Tony.
It's important that we continue that relationship, Surrey Board of Trade and the trustees. We have to continue to expand on what you have now and grow, work with the Board of Trade, work with the employers that are in this great city. And and look at some of the issues that we're we're facing now and that we're going to be facing in five years, ten years. Trades, for one, is a big thing. More and more kids are not being, or they're not interested, or they're not, they're not getting that real interest into the trades aspect. And and I see where I work. And I've been trying to work with my employer on creating a a new trade where we can, where we can sponsor. And that's, I think, what we need to do is is continue to bring more of our our Surrey business groups and and work together and expand it.
Thank you very much, Gary.
We have dozens and dozens of programs in Surrey School District where we train our high school students, whether it's arts, whether it's cooking, mechanical, plumbing, electrician, you name it. But we want to enhance it more. That was the only reason why I requested you, Anita, to come and present to the board, so we can enhance these programs even further with the help of Surrey Board of Trade. Because we know entrepreneurship is very, very important and that mindset can be set up in early ages in a childhood's early brain when they are not even sure what they want to do in their life. And if the proper support is given by the experienced entities like Surrey Board of Trade and and that can come and become a partner with Surrey School District, a lot can be done. So thank you very much, Anita, for your presentation.
Thank you very much. And you may be seated. And group number three, please. So if you were elected school trustee, how would you invoke a culture where we reduce racism, we understand each other's culture? Half of our population in Surrey has a mother tongue other than English. We have the highest urban indigenous population within British Columbia, right here in Surrey. That that diversity is our asset. But what programs would you work in partnership with teachers and parents to really enhance that understanding of what is our differences are really our strengths? Naseema?
Thank you for the question. Awareness is the best weapon against any issues. We have to teach our kids to be tolerant and respectful of any culture and have that genuine and deep respects for every human being, regardless of their origins, values, religion, practice, or sexual orientation. How can we implement it? We have to make anti-bullying or we have to have different cultures to come and present at our school, especially students. We have a lot of students in Surrey school because their diversity and asking everybody to talk about their culture and be inclusive.
Thank you very much, Dupinder.
Thank you for that question. And I think it's a very important one again because some of the key issues in our schools line up, like racism with bullying and the drug gang violence. You know, there are layers and layers of complexity there and why things happen. And I think a lot of it starts, obviously, from home. We have to teach, like Naseema said, values to our children of inclusivity and the diversity we're bringing into this community and into this country. If we want to be bringing in multiculturalism like that, we have to learn how to adapt to it, be flexible to it. Now, insecurities are a big thing. So when people behave in certain manners, whether it's bullying, whether it's racism, they've got an insecurity or a weakness internally themselves that they need to be working on in order for them to gain that strength, to be tolerant, to address these issues. So lots of workshops, lots of engagement within other community stakeholders. As Jasbeer has mentioned, is very, very important. And the provincial government is already working on anti-racism key issues as we see. So.
Thank you very much, Gary.
Thank you very much. And for the question, to answer the question, what I would do and what we would do, we actually started a year ago. So at the end of last year, we asked the superintendent to do a scan across our district to find out what's going on in terms of racial inequality within our district. Five hundred people participated in that, teachers and support staff as well as students. And that report is coming to the board tomorrow night. And I anticipate that we will take action as a board moving forward. And that action will look like setting up a separate department within the school district, a racial inequality department that will have the resources funded by the board to make sure that we move forward over a multi-year plan to fix this, to move forward so that we can become far more inclusive and celebrate the diversities within our district. And that's what we're going to be doing over the next few years.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. And everyone, we're now going to move to close. Thank you very much. You may be seated. And everyone, we're now going to move to closing comments. You each have two minutes. And just watch the yellow and red car, you know, the process around the cards. And you have two minutes, we're going to begin with Lisa. Please state your name clearly, look into the camera and you may begin.
My name is Lisa Alexis. I'm running for school board trustee. I ran in 2018 and got nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty seven votes as an independent, which shocked me. But I think the voters showed that they see my experience in finance with budgeting, planning. I've advanced to an operations and project manager since then, and I think they see that those business acumen can help contribute to the school board. I am a graduate of Ellie Matheson. In 2000, I have two of my three children go to, one graduated, one's currently in Surrey Schools, the other will enter it in a couple of years. I just really love Surrey. I love the diversity here. And I really hope that I'm elected so that I can contribute my experience to the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bell beer.
Okay, I decided to run as a trustee because I've been approached by families with their challenges and they wanted me to get involved to make change the school system. So I've got thirty plus years of experience in education and health, and I've got the expertise to facilitate the change. I'm not a politician, I'm not a business person who's looking to increase my profile, but someone who's been involved in the community for most of my life. I'm running for school board for one reason only, and that's to make the school system better so we have the supports for our future generation. It's been a tough few years for students and staff. The COVID-19 pandemic has taken a toll on everyone. As the facilitator of the network to eliminate violence in relationships, I've also seen the hidden pandemic that no one talks about, relationship violence and the toll it's had on families, communities, students for a number of years. Securing more funding to ensure sports for students and fair working conditions for staff is going to require dedication, creativity and passion. I successfully work with all levels of government. I'm known for working with everyone and trying to eliminate silos. I strive to use my privilege and any power I have to help others. We Team Surrey Schools will welcome you to board meetings, open houses and continue to listen to you. We want to work with you to create the best school system that we can in this province. So I would be honored to represent you at the board table and listen to you and work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob.
Start by thanking our audience for patiently sitting through this, both live and on Facebook. Like to thank our sponsors for making sure this happened and for the Board of Trade, Anita, your work and your board's work on bringing us here has been a really great event. We don't have enough of these throughout the election cycle, so it's really great that you've done this. So I'll start by highlighting some of our, some of our accomplishments when it comes to work, work experience, comes to working with businesses. We have thousands, as I mentioned earlier, alluded to this a little bit earlier, we have a database of over six thousand employers we work with. Every year we have a couple thousand students out on different work experiences. Students have the opportunity to, to take a couple of, two courses throughout their, their school time, giving them work experience. This is really important, really important opportunities for our students and it's something we take a lot of pride in. Every year our career department comes with new programs, the, the amount of different opportunities for students would stagger you. I have a list here. I'm not going to read out, it's about probably thirty or forty different sectors of the economy we work with employers in. So it's really, it's important work. That's why I think this event is all the more important. It's important that business people understand how important they are to schools and how important our students are to them in the future. And really over the last four years, last eight years that I've been on the board, I'm really proud of a lot of things we've done. We've built a lot of new schools, as I mentioned, we're opening new daycare spaces this month. We're planning to open up more new schools, billions of dollars have been spent on schools here and will continue to be spent. We will continue advocating for you. My own background, I used to be involved in PAC and DPAC, I was president of the 3DPAC for a number of years. So when I hear the talk about parent voice, I agree, that's a very important, a very, very important voice to hear. We try to hear parents when we can, we always look for new ways to do so. I am concerned that the parent voice has been a little bit lost over COVID, something we need to work with them and see if they can find ways to strengthen their voice. I ask you to vote for me, Bob Holmes, and our Surrey First Education team. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasbeer.
Thank you very much, Anita, and thank you very much Board of Trade for this opportunity. My name is Jasvi Narwal. I have master's degree in psychology and education. Before coming to Canada, I did work as a lecturer and principal in Punjab University, Chandigarh. Upon coming here, I got my certification with STABAT and started working as a certified court interpreter. And this time I got all feedback from my community and other neighborhood communities that they want a positive change in Surrey School Board. This present team is running for three times, twelve years, and we have more and more issues. And you know, it is sad that boards and governments are like diapers, they need to be changed. And please, Surrey, I feel to Surrey, elect whoever you want to, but change these diapers, please. So, so that we have new vision, new programs. And you know, in twelve years, we have gang violence, we have everything, everything is increasing. And you are voting again and again to the same slate. So please, I am here to request you give chance to new people who have new vision. And they, if our slate is elected, parents, boys, we see, we will work collaboratively. We were welcome, everybody, we will bring together Surrey Board of Trade, our parents, we will sit as a team. We will be a sort of bridge between, between government and all stakeholders. So we will do our best, we want best education, Surrey, please vote and support us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Naseema.
Thank you. My name is Naseemel Asto. I am running to be your school trustee because I believe students learn best when they feel safe and that's my priority. I lost my fourteen-year-old son, Hamid Nasto, to suicide, who took his life after relentless bullying at his high school. Consequently, I founded Hamid Nastos Anti-Bullying Coalition, our, an organization raising awareness about the serious problem of bullying and teen suicide. I have spoken to students in over a hundred different schools throughout BC and I'm very proud to have been told that my son's message has helped save many lives and made a difference, which I hope to bring to Surrey Board of Education. Additionally, I worked as, I served as director of the Board of Community Embracing Restorative Justice for six years. And I was a member of Social Equity and Diversity Committee at Surrey City Hall. I served as director of Afghan Association of BC. Also, I'm a founding member of Survivor Advocates in Action for Suicide and Suicide Prevention. I have a degree in psychology and I'm working as a realtor. I think it's time to have diverse voices advocating at our Surrey District. I will be your strong advocate on your, on Surrey Board of Education if elected. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary Ann.
Thank you. I am Mary Ann Pine. I am running with Team Surrey Schools. And I believe that education is a shared responsibility and I want to be a part of, a part of the team that is going to shoulder that responsibility. I came here as an immigrant many years ago. My children came, even though they came as Canadian citizens, they came as immigrants too. My grandchildren have been, all have been born in Canada and I've seen through my personal experience, I've seen through the experiences of my, my children and now I'm witnessing what's happening with my grandchildren. And I can tell you that there are a lot of things I didn't know that I didn't know. And as parents, as individuals, as human beings living in, in Surrey, living in this world, it's so important for us to understand the challenges that our children are facing. It's so important for us to understand that the future that we are creating for, we are creating a future for them. How are we doing that really and truly? How are we doing that within our homes? How are we doing that within school? What are we doing within the workplaces? I strongly believe change is good. I've heard for different reasons, you know, we're a diverse city. It's not just because we're a diverse city, it is because we care about our children, we care about our future. I've heard people say to me, they, they don't, they don't vote for a school trustee because they don't have children. So you're depending on our children, everybody else's children to take care of you and take care of your future. That's not on. I'm here before you. I'm not an educator, but I am a human being. I'm asking.
Thank you very much, Tony.
Thank you, Anita. Thank you for the Surrey Board of Trade and everyone that's here that has the event or made this event possible and thanks for the sponsors. So I'm here before you, my name, Tony Rubello, running for, or running with Team Surrey Schools and running for the Surrey School Trustee position. I'm here because I've been asked by many people to run years ago and not because for political aspirations or anything like that. It's because I care. Anything I do, I, I jump in with both feet and I put all my effort into it. I work collaboratively with everyone. I've worked with provincial, federal and municipal politicians in, in my day job. The real reason why I'm here, it's because my daughter. She graduated this year at Kwong Park and she came to me stating, Dad, I'm frustrated. I can't see my counselor for three weeks. And I said, why? She didn't know. And that frustrated me quite a bit. And then I hear what happened to the seems, son. What if my daughter needed that help, needed that gateway? What if someone else's kid, like Naseem's son, needed that gateway? I talked with the teacher, they told me that the resources aren't there, counselors are being told and being told to teach. I stand here before you, vote for Tony Rubello, Team Surrey Schools, we'll do the best job that we can.
Thank you, Deepinder.
Thank you, Anita. Thank you, Surrey Board of Trade. Thank you to the audience who's here today and the sponsors as well for giving us this opportunity to speak. And as you've heard some of the candidates say, we discussed the lack of resources, we discussed the different issues and key concerns that we're all noticing in the community and the school system itself. Through this forum, I was able to kind of give you a little bit about my background as a nurse, as a founder of One Voice Canada, as a parent. I, like Tony, do have a son in the public school system. I've been a part of the public school system. I've seen the changes myself. I've been on PAC and key concerns that parents bring up are similar to what we are hearing today. There's lacks, a lack of resources when it comes to mental health and you know, as advocates in the community and already doing community active, activity out there, these are things that we're helping provide that we are filling in those gaps as volunteers in the community, not being paid. Since my last campaign, it's been four years non-stop. My family sees me out there all day long, every day, helping families because I've got a passion for it. It's not that I'm trying to gain some sort of public, you know, opportunity here. It is because I key feel that if we help children at the base up to the years of zero to 10 initially, and then help them through guidance through thirteen years and into the college system and the university system, we're building and producing adults that can, are capable in leading in our community and we've created leaders in the community. So you know, through international students, through domestic students here, we've been able to create key lead advocates who now actually go out into the community and talk about drug, drugs and violence, talk about opioid crisis. Give the resources that are needed to the community, whether it's seniors, youth and others. So you know, I, I've got a track record for it. I don't need to speak on my behalf or have anybody praise me, what I'll.
Thank you very much. Bobby.
Hi, I'm Bobby Taylor from Team Surrey Schools. Thank you again for hosting this event tonight. I am a member of many different committees and boards that I currently sit on. I sit on the board for a family network of deaf children, supporting those that have, need access to visual and/or, and/or spoken language. I sit on the BCD Access Society Advisory Committee. I've been a part of that organization since inception with the Job Action of 2014. I also sit beside families in school meetings to empower those parents to know what their rights are so that they can advocate for their children's to have access to education. The, the parent voice is really important. I'm also the recipient of the George Matthews Award from BCC PAC for 2021. I'm here to walk beside families. I can tell you as of last week when school started, my phone has blown up every day. And it's not just Surrey, the majority of them are Surrey because they know that I'm a trusted person, parent and commandant, that they can feel, that they feel safe and secure for themselves. But there are a lot of things that are going on. I need to remind folks that while we talk about funding, yes, there's funding, but there's also spending and how is that funding being spent on the students, on the support staff? I have teachers, support staff, as well as lots of different folks that help work in the different areas of our district who also feel that they can trust that I will take what they're saying, hold it in confidence, but help advocate and push forward for the needs that are needed within the classroom. I do ask as a parent of fourteen, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen and eighteen-year-old, all living with varying degrees of disabilities, that you vote for Bobby Taylor of Team Surrey Schools on October fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Finn.
Thank you, Anita. Thank you, Surrey Board of Trade, all the attendees present here online. Thank you to our sponsors, our media partners. Thank you for being here. I disagree with Mr. Narwal's comment because politics is just like any other profession. The longer you work in it, the better you get. So I was not aware of the work that was done by trustees when I came into this role eight years back. But I'm glad that I came and I've learned a lot in last eight years and I would love, love to take that opportunity to take the advantage of my experience and continue working and enhancing our, our school system even better. So on October fifteenth, please vote for me, Gary Finn, and my entire team of Surrey First Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary.
Thank you. My name is Gary Timaschuk and I'm with Surrey First Education. Thank you, Anita. Thank you, Board of Trade, the Board of Directors, the sponsors, and of course, all the attendees, both here in the room and of course, virtually live streaming. I'm extremely proud of the work that the board has done over the last four years, in fact, eight years, because I've been a trustee for the last eight years and I'm proud of that. And that speaks to experience. I've also been a city councillor here in the city of Surrey and that too brings a wealth of experience, particularly when dealing with our colleagues at the city council level. I've also served on over twenty committees, boards, commissions, task force in our community and in our province. And I'm very proud about that and I'm also speaks to the experience that I bring to the table. We've had an excellent track record. You've heard some of it here tonight. We've opened six new schools in the last four years. We've got more shovels already in the ground, Tatloo is underway, Snookomish will be under construction very shortly and other schools coming up as well. And we've also got a strong career ed department with thousands, literally thousands of employers in our database who our staff communicate with to find placements for two thousand students each and every year to go out and do some sample work. Forty percent of those students actually end up getting hired by those employers right here in Surrey. I also want to speak about our budget and our fiscal responsibility, which we have been very, very strong on. And we've balanced our budget for the last four years beyond that, but certainly for the last term, last four years. And we have not laid off any staff. We have hired. And we have not laid off any staff. We have hired over two hundred new EAs who are the ones who support our special needs students. We've hired more teachers and we have hired additional support staff to make sure that our schools and infrastructure can operate on a day in and day out basis. My name is Gary Timaschuk. I'm part of the Surrey First Education team. Vote for experience, vote vote for proven, uh strong proven leadership. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, a round of applause for our candidates for school trustee. Thank you so much, everyone. You did a great job, and the past two hours have been fabulous. And everyone, a round of applause also to our interpreters. Thank you so much for being here. And on behalf of the Surrey Board of Trade and the South Asian Business Association, thank you so much for being here tonight. And remember, we have the city council debate on September twenty-ninth, our mayoral debate on October fifth. Thank you so much to I O M Property Group, the Fraser Valley Real Estate Board, and the Surrey Now Leader for their support of this event. Thank you so much. Make it a great business week. You may leave the meeting. Thank you.